Hi, there's a list of five.
Great.
On a small boat?
No, I don't want to take a boat. I also did the land trip too.
Yeah.
You see that new cruise ship going out with those nine thousand people?
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty thousand ton ship.
Wow, look at, look at Crystal, they just went bankrupt or something, yeah?
Yes, they did.
So you know, these cruise lines keep getting these new ships, I mean, who's gonna go on them? Who's gonna pay for them? They're all gonna end up going under.
Yeah. It's a sketchy situation.
Haven't had a cruise in eight years.
Correct.
Nothing you thought. Multi-million dollar ships, billion dollar ships.
That was the whole thing, like I said, we were supposed to go two years ago. And Jack put off, I put off, so I was like, okay.
And I told my sister and brother-in-law and friends, they goes all the time. I think they do one three a year. And so they, you know, keep planning this one, and it keeps getting postponed because of COVID. So, I mean, it's probably a year and a half.
Well, my husband felt it was highly unfair that I was leaving him during the tax season, you know, and spring break. So not only does he have to worry about feeding the kids who are coming home, what, like, the day before I leave? Like, this is getting worse, though. Like, oh, too bad, so sad, see, you gotta go.
I have, Erwin, I won, won early. Downtown, they sweep the streets every week. But I live on Ocean Avenue. They don't sweep the streets, too, and they have excuses that it's a state highway, they're not allowed.
You have a little chair.
You are, you're a little one there. Sand, I'm shoveling sand on the street. People blow down the street on my sidewalk.
You're moving deep, like, drums.
This is the third show. I'm here right at the end of the congregation. We're three people. And we're looking at this. More sort of listening together. And street sweeping has come up, because a lot of people's markets, you know, block and block. But your, your concern is, you'd like to have town, because it's a state highway. There's other different regulations.
No, it's just, yeah. But the worst part of, you know, one of the things that they wanted to enforce, not clearing your sidewalks and stuff from the snow. When you live on Ocean, the snow that piled up on my street, it's illegal. It's this high, and then overnight it gets wet. I mean, if it gets wet overnight, it freezes, it's like concrete. You can't even get it, you can't. You need a chis, you need a stick for the break.
And if you shovel, it's all free.
Yeah, you shovel it, they come plow right over it, and you're like, again.
The worst when you're mid-shoveling, and they come on. It's just, it's. That's insulting. You're like, I'm here. It's almost there if you don't see it happen. I know. It was like thirty seconds later, we actually just find, knowing that, it is not for us.
Hi, Steve.
I was okay. I was, I was across the street, I was in James' Park a lot, when I saw the county truck coming down, or state truck coming down the highway, pushing it all back on the sidewalk. And I'm standing there watching, like, wow. Did they, they take that last run for clean right up against the curb?
But they, when they come so fast, it actually throws the snow in the beach.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. It was crap. They knocked me once.
We all ready? Hello, Mark?
It was good.
Do you, you need a test?
I'm testing. I'm already tested.
So, ready?
Yeah, good, are you ready?
Yeah. I will call the meeting to order. Can we all stand and join in a pledge to the agreement?
I pledge the agreement as the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in his love, for liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. The meeting is now called to order. The Borough of Seabright, in compliance with the Public Open Meeting Act, provided adequate notice of the time, date, and location of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the link news on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. File notice with the Borough Clerk, and posted notice in the Borough Office and on the Borough website. This meeting is open to the public. Can we have a roll call?
Councilman Bieber?
Here.
Ms. Bills? Mr. Cashmore?
Here.
Chairman Cunningham? Vice Chairman DeSao?
Here.
Ms. Gorman?
Here.
Mayor Kelly? Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Lexte?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Julia?
Here.
Are we missing him?
We just got him. It's in a different order. Gotcha, I saw you.
Okay.
All right, first on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes of, of February eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Somebody second? Any vote?
Councilman Bieber?
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lexte?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda would be the memorialization of resolution for R.P.R. Holdings LLC. That's the house on Embry where we decided that the, we didn't need to peer before us.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
A roll call?
Councilman Bieber?
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lexte?
Yes.
Okay, next would be the memorialization of the resolution for Ivan Martin. That's three, admit in court, that's the building behind, and we didn't approve for commercial.
And Martin, those changes are all made through the resolution?
Yep, made and sent.
Okay, so I will make that motion.
Second?
I'll say it.
Make a roll call?
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lexte?
Yes.
Okay, done with our business. Next on the, would be a new application of Craig Lewis.
Then, Mr. Chair?
Step up here. Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this conversation. I was involved in a real estate grant, and I was on the seller's side.
Okay.
And we're losing purchase, so, let's stop now. Thank you.
And, uh, I'll roll his documents in order?
Yes, sorry. So, just for purposes of the record, let the record reflect that we have received the notice, reviewed the notice, notice is appropriate, so the board can accept jurisdiction.
Hey, Ms. Lewis, you, you have the floor.
Yeah, so in short, we have a, only a front yard, not a backyard, because our house is sitting over the water. It's a house that's built, still, it's over the water. There's a small eight by eight shed that's located right now in the corner of the property. That's adjacent to Billy Bar's house, which is the house in Park Bar, it's basically ocean. And then the house about three seventy to the north of us. We, we have no storage in the house, and no garage, so we need more storage space. And so we just bring in a larger shed, we'd like to put in a larger shed. It's nine feet deep by twenty feet wide, it's a hundred eighty square feet total. At eleven feet high. There's an obish product that they cut, and they pulled it from the river, effectively. So it's a non-permanent structure. And we're looking to put it in the corner, so close to the edges of the property to give us maximum room in our car, because a lot of land is about fifty feet wide by sixty feet deep. So it's a big pressure.
The reason Mr. Lewis is here is because he exceeds the requirements for a, an accessory structure on the property. This is larger than what's allowed, and it's also being placed in a front yard, which is not also allowed.
Also, and reduce setbacks. The setbacks are reduced.
And the setbacks that are required. But, uh, but as he testified, he doesn't have anything but a backyard, a front yard.
Front yard, two back yards.
So if anything qualifies for a hardship condition, this does.
Do you intend to put any electrical in this property?
No.
Nothing, so no heat, no electric, no plumbing? Just a simple electrical structure?
The front yard is essentially his neighbor's backyard. Right, so the front yard is kind of the backyard.
But if you also look at the picture here that they provided, did you look at the picture they provided? It shows that where he wants to put the shed is actually next to their driveway. It's not like it's next to their patio, their living area, their outdoors, door space. And on the other side, it also is, is, is driveway. Isn't that a driveway on the other side? Yeah. Here also.
That's not, I don't think that's his.
No, but I'm saying that where he wants to put the shed really isn't encumbering on anybody else to certainly quality a life, too.
Are you in a race, race shed?
And how tall is the shed? It's eleven feet on the face, and then eighteen on the back, so it's like a wedge shed. So eleven, it'll be eleven, and then it's something around eight.
What is the proximity to your neighbor's rear yard when you set off?
Pardon?
Your neighbor behind you or east of you. What are, what is your setback off of their property?
Uh, I believe I asked for three feet in one setback and five in the other, or I'm forgetting. I think it was five feet back from him and three feet from the adjacent property to the door.
Do you have this picture, Steve?
Well, I have this, the survey, and it doesn't have dimensions on it, so that's what I'm trying to.
The shed he wants to place five foot from the planter there, there's a planter in the back. Do you have this picture? You want to see it?
Uh, I mean, I have.
This explains.
I have, I have the picture.
That explains the location, you can see it clearly.
So the planter's on your property?
Pardon?
Is the planter on your property? Oh, okay. That is a question. The planter's on your property.
The existing shed's going to go away, right? Correct.
And it's strictly for storage, right?
Correct.
You know, electricity, no plumbing?
No.
You're o, you're done? Yeah, so, uh, we'll open this portion to the public. If there's anybody in the public that has a question on his testimony or a comment on this application. If nobody in the public has anything to say, we'll close the public. Does the board have any discussion or, or motion?
I'm, I'm gonna assume that the neighbor does an objection, because the neighbor will be here if they did.
Correct, and no neighbor's objected, we talked about it directly, but in addition, of course, to the two hundred foot notice, there's no objections.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Okay, Councilman Bieber?
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Julia?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was easy.
We also say thanks to Ken, and she was very helpful. So I was a baby in the document.
She is, she's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Should we stand or do we, do we? I don't know. You're right, sweetie.
You're all set. One, two, three. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Good to see you.
We'll note that Ms. Lexte has joined us back on the panel. The next application is Armin, uh, Caccatorian?
It's supposed to be blue, right?
Is it?
It's supposed to be blue.
What is this?
It's not, it's not.
They don't use.
I operate right now.
That's, that's when we used to be.
Okay, that's only for. Okay, just making sure I'm using the main voice.
All right, this is Forty-Eighth Normandy Place. They're looking for a bulk variance relief for the rear yard setback. So you have the floor?
Good evening, hi, John Sartor, I'm back down, came from the office here down now in Cecil. And with me is the representative back in Armin Caccatorian. Yeah, I guess to set the table, so to speak, there's a number of variances that are requested, that's over here. And, and even before I mentioned that, there was a prior approval, twenty eighteen, the board granted several variances related to an application for a similar sized home on the same lot. We're here again now because we're modifying the, the request. It's a little bit different, there's some additional deck in the rear that sort of increases the imperturbance, and also the home shifted toward the rest on the lot. There's several variances requested, primarily the side yard setbacks don't comply, and then the rear yard setback, as well as some of the lot coverage. Although, we can describe to you in a little more detail as we get going, that this is two lots. It's lots one, three, and there's lot twenty-three, point oh-one, and two years, right here, we're gonna call it, that's, goes out into the tree barrier. And there's quite a bit of that lot that's upwind and not flows by the river. And when you include that area within the overall property, it kind of reveals the variance release, but there's a respect of concern, the stance, the request, and variance, some of them might not be necessary. And we're only including those couple of acres of that lot here, nothing else. So with that, I guess Chairman's pleasure is to swear on Mr. Caccatorian.
Did, did you have that on your, the last time you approved? Did you, did you have the same side yard setbacks?
It was actually a little bit, the variance release a little bit reduced from the prior application.
So you're decreasing that setback now?
I, I think, no, it's increased slightly.
Oh, you're increasing it?
Yeah, the, the property's twenty-five feet wide, and pre his approval, I think it was two point two and two point eight on either side. Now it's three feet on both sides.
Oh, good, so really, you're only extending toward the east?
The, the west way.
West, I'm sorry, yeah, so. But there was a deck there also, there was a deck there originally, too, you're just making it larger?
Correct.
Okay.
Before, sorry, did you, did you add the, or was the Caccatorian lot that was branded added into the calculations for the total, or not?
That's not, so if you look at the zoning table and the chart on those engineering plans, it's not. They're facing it only on lot twenty-three, not the twenty-three point oh-one. But the plan itself, if you, it's written, kind of written by the notation for twenty-three point oh-one in the plan, if, if, I think there's something like seventeen fifty upwind in there, there's like notes of how much education I heard.
So has the lot been included?
Well, not, no, we still need the side yard setbacks.
No, I know the side yard setbacks, so, so. You've got one percent, that extra one percent you would need.
Correct, for lot coverage and building coverage.
Right.
And, and arguably, rear yard setback becomes just maybe a technical variance, because that's the tax lot line, but, which is set to the, the limit of the repairing plan. But in actuality, you have like seventy-five feet of sand going back to the river.
Right, okay, just wanted to clarify that.
And obvious, you own twenty-three point oh-one.
Correct, yeah, so.
And by grant, I was gonna say, yeah, because by grant, he owns it, so, yeah, it's not going anywhere.
And, and yeah, the two lots travel, we got an ownership line.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Caccatorian, can you raise your hand, sir? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for purposes of this application?
I do.
Thank you, can you state your name for the record and your address, please?
Armin Caccatorian, and the address is two sixty-five Forest Avenue, Glen Ridge, New Jersey. Oh, seven, oh, two, eight.
Thank you. Can I just ask, for purposes of clarification, because on your application, I think you have an address that's in Island on Wood Avenue, so the Glen Ridge address is your, is your correct?
That's my home address, correct.
Okay, is the other address a work address?
That's my work address.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Just a point of, I guess, for the record, where Mr. Caccatorian's a professional engineer licensed in the state, but he's not testifying.
Not testifying as an engineer, he's testifying as an architect.
So these aren't his plans, but he certainly has the knowledge of the subject area. So I just wanted to.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So, Mr. Caccatorian, please. Your civil engineer, Chuck Clinschmidt, did he prepare a plan that you want to mark into evidence here tonight? Well, I guess I should ask, the plan's already marked, however you want to do it.
So.
His plan, Mr. Menes.
I was gonna say, so for purposes of the record, everything then has been submitted that you're going through reference is up on the website, so we will do that as a, as a catchall for the exhibits. If you are submitting anything tonight?
Sure.
Then we will mark that as exhibit one through whatever, okay, just so you know. And also, for purposes of the record, we have reviewed notice, notice is deemed appropriate, and the board can accept jurisdiction, so we'll just get that in there.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, these, these are the plans that are submitted, and on the website, the civil engineering plans compared by length from last devised as of January twenty-two. Correct. Did you want to present off of a board?
I, I have a, I have a photograph, a picture, some thousand words, right? I have a photograph that I took, and what I want to show you is what was approved and what I'm trying to do, I think, in one picture, you will get a real good idea. But this is the overhead aerial photograph of the area.
Can you just pick it up, sir? Okay, so now this was not submitted in the package, right?
No.
And you took this picture yourself?
I did.
Okay, and approximately when?
Yesterday.
Okay, so for purposes of the record, we're gonna mark this exhibit A one?
Correct.
Okay.
And I have a pen, I can do that.
That's fine, thank you.
So this is the property in Evercoguina. These are the two neighbors. This neighbor unfortunately is an informer, that he wanted to be here tonight as a public to support. He's as tired as anyone else about seeing this eyesore that's been there for, for, literally for fifteen years.
So. Dare say, isn't it?
The home that was approved by this board was effectively, um, right there. And that's, that's the exact footprint of what was approved. It was a small deck. The architect drew it, and the person that owned the property is from Staten Island, that's no idea how we live in Seabright, we basically live on the deck in Seabright, we fuck the deal on the deck. So this deck was very small, barely big enough to put a table and chairs there. And when this was drawn in two thousand and eighteen and approved, this house wasn't there. And so this house was set further back. And so the architect drew it to line up with the house where it was. But then this house went up in the last few years. And it's considerably forward, and we line up with this neighbor and all the other houses down here. So what I'm proposing is exactly the same footprint of the building, but ever so slightly a larger deck. But to take the whole thing and move it up seven and a half feet to line it up, to line the house up with this house, is still a little bit shy of this house. But the decks end up lining up, and it's much more of a livable condition, as opposed to having the deck. If I were to take this house and build it where the original plan was, would bring the deck way back, and you really can't be on the deck and see it anymore. So that's effectively the entire thing, that's, this is the only difference from what was approved back in two thousand and eighteen. The deck is the only thing that's a little bit larger than this little deck that was here. But the footprint, the actual building footprint, I kept it exactly the same as what was proposed in the past and past approved, just so that we don't have the additional lot coverage, building coverage issue. So the, the actual footprint of the building is exactly the same. The only difference is the deck in the front, under, they call it the front, the river is the front. I don't know if it's the rear of the property, but it's just a deck that's slightly larger and we wanted to line it up with everyone else. The repairing rights line, for anyone who might be interested, really is going through, through this neighbor's lot and right through here. So that's the area, and that's what, that's the problem with, you know, with the returning rights line and asking for a variance. But if you count both properties, this is twenty-three, and this is twenty-three point oh-one, if you count both properties together, there's, you know, I should have flown it a little bit higher so people can see the river, but the river is still way up here. There's a lot of land back here.
Why didn't you include the two lots together? Is there a reason?
No, they're just two lots that are together.
Oh, they're together, so in the calculation, then they should have qualified.
Yeah, wouldn't have needed a, a variance at all for.
For any of the lot coverage or anything?
Lot coverage, building coverage, whatever you want.
So the only thing you really need is the setbacks?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the setback, and the side yard setbacks were already granted in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
I'm actually making it slightly larger than what was approved.
And you're not extending any further than your neighbors are?
No, I'm lining up with this one, not even going, not even going as, as close to this one. There's about a three and a half feet difference between the two of them, the fronts. But we're lining up with this house, and the decks are all gonna align. Two quick things, real quickly. I know it's both of those decks are on angle, the existing, at least it looks at from an aerial perspective. Any reasons to that, as you can follow? I think, I think that's just, because I have a drone, I shot it with a drone. Now, drone is, drone is here, what you're seeing is the stairs. That's what you're seeing, that they're an angle. The stairs coming down appears to be at an angle.
I see.
But the drone is sort of standard up here.
Okay.
And that's the perspective, a little bit. Second thing is, there's no permanent structures west of the deck, so.
Nothing, there's, there's no bulkhead or anything. It's part of this construction, there's no permanent structures that you're building beyond the deck, or other. Yeah, yeah. So this will be marked?
That's A one, yes, please. Can you mark the two inserts as A one A and A one B?
The computer. I have a good plan, I can't prepare it. Sometimes you're there. So I, just to follow up on a question, I think part of the reason, there's consistency despite the change in ownership, it was the same civil engineer. And, and the last application was just slightly under on the coverage, and there was no rear yard setback in terms of the, where the house was located. So I, I don't think anyone necessarily noticed that twenty-three point oh-one wasn't included. And I was reviewing this, this morning, and I noticed, I'm looking at the local plate, and it's like, this doesn't seem right, because it's almost property. So I don't think it certainly wasn't intentional.
They don't need those variances now.
With the inclusion of the twenty-three oh-one now. Right. And I verified that with our professionals as well.
That was my question.
Yeah.
I think that was.
Yeah, I spoke to, to our planner, we're pretty much in agreement on that.
Uh, I mean, that, that's kind of the proximity of this application. I don't know if the board's interested in seeing the architect or whether they'll do anything else.
No, it's the same house we approved already.
Right.
It's just making the deck bigger, larger.
Correct. I'm glad that you see it now. We asked if we increase.
Are you increasing the front yard setback?
Well, the, the front yard becomes seven and a half feet larger than what we had before.
Didn't we, that's what I thought. You increase the deck size, we also want the house.
It'll actually help parking for the street, and you guys have been to normally places in the summer time. But it's a lot, a lot of congestion there.
It's both, it's both a combination of moving the house back and making the deck a little bigger.
Right, yeah.
Have you received your CAF report yet? I noticed that you did submit an amendment, have you received any notification?
Not yet, no, I'm, I'm waiting.
So it would be subject to receiving the CAF report as well?
Right.
How much available non-wetlands on twenty-three point oh-one, like, you know how many?
How many square feet?
Yeah.
Um, sure. On the plan. Sure, if, if on the plan, it delineates 1,750 square feet or 0.04 acres of upland. So that's upland of the main high waterline.
And the total is 2,712, so it's more than, more than.
Yeah, it was only about 1% over on, on lot building coverage, which brings that out very well.
Then you complete then? Your testimonies, you finished?
Unless the board and the boardroom has had any questions, yeah.
Well, I need to open it to the public, so.
Of course, and again, I think the same variance relief, if the side yard setbacks are pretty much a hardship, if we were to build a conforming house here, I think it would be 10 feet wide in the building envelope, so that that's a classic hardship, and that kind of testimony is similar to the previous event, but other than that, we'll open the testimony. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Then this portion will open it to the public. Is there anybody in the public that has a question of any of this testimony or a comment?
I'm, 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 the applicant, his name's Adam Katchetorian.
Can you stand and state your name?
Yes, Adam Katchetorian.
Adam, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for purposes of application? Thank you.
If you're about to oppose the application.
I was gonna say, I'll be very disappointed.
I just want, I just want to clarify something on the section, so that there's no misunderstanding. The vice chair made a comment, that's the same exact house that was pre-approved, there are some minor differences, windows were a little bit different, it is not the same exact house architecture. The previous side had a flat roof, this one has a pitched roof. If you'd like to see the drawings, I can see a little bit, a little more of a contemporary.
We're more concerned in the size of the house.
Yeah, it doesn't really have any, the aesthetics don't really have anything to do with variances that were.
A footprint is still.
And it was, it was actually noted in the permit denial initially that some of the facade features had changed, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was covered.
It's on the record, it's all good, thanks.
And there's, since there's nobody else in the public, we'll close the public portion.
I may have motion to approve the application.
Maybe somebody wants to discuss it?
Discuss it.
No, I agree, I think it's, there's no reason not to approve this. Do we have a second?
I do have a second, yeah.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Sure, Councillor DeSao?
Yes.
And Mr. Cashcore?
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao?
Yes.
Ms. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Leckstein?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My first time here, but it's really nice now. How long you got to open the business on the third floor?
Oh, this building in particular?
Yeah.
Yeah. When did they finish, Mark? You probably know best.
Two years ago?
Three years ago.
Three, oh yeah, Frank, you had more to do with that.
Was it virtual? I mean, it was probably virtual for a while, four or five months ago, we came back to live meetings, I think.
Seems right.
Yeah, about four, five months.
I forgot to call your name. Yes, thank you.
So let the record play for them.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good luck. And thank you to Candace, because I will strike out when I should call her. We're hearing that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so you want, if you catch that from the cardboard, you can take the cardboard and leave the picture of that. Just the big ones, not the little ones, we'll take the little. Yeah. Thank you so much, sir.
Now, is there any other business before the board this evening?
I don't know if we want to talk about that or.
Well, she, she sent out an email, and I guess everybody's going to respond. You want to just see what all the responses are first?
I just want to make sure we don't make it too hard for Candace, whatever she decides to do. Because to me, if everybody wanted a new repackage, don't do it. It would be, it would just be too hard to have version 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, then I would just sit through the whole thing. Because as we know, we require a delivery document from the applicant, so the delivery has to happen. If everybody was comfortable with a different format, it would use the paper, the paper card, and we went that way, I think that would be fine, but I'm not pushing on anybody, I just ask.
Yeah, but you maybe need to explain a little bit so everybody understands. All the, all the paperwork that's submitted by the applicant, you're going to get in paper. It's only the other items, such as the resolution, the minutes, and that kind of items, and the agenda catalog go on, on, online instead, to save printing.
I would like to have a paper agenda.
Yeah, just the agenda, that's what I said, yeah, just a meeting agenda. A meeting agenda for, for, you know, evening of the year.
That makes perfect sense to me.
But everything else can be electronic.
When we're reviewing electronically, having an agenda is a good thing, both home and here. So I think if it's delivered with all the material provided by the applicant and an agenda, it cuts down on the amount of packaging she has to do. If everybody's comfortable, is that good as far as, you know, we have a ghost, it doesn't work, we work on that.
Is there anybody that indicated they're objecting to it again?
There are a couple of people who said they would like both paper and they want papers still.
Were they talking about the minutes and anything like that? Do we need a majority on that, or just? No, someone wants the minutes.
They're filed for it, they're filed for it.
I just don't know why, I'm not after reading.
I was just asking, if the one that comes through, would it come through an email from you, like attachments, if you normally have, or a link to where we can find it versus ourselves going somewhere and trying to find it, all the paper? You mean, like the PDF of the application stuff, right, within it just being, okay. Yeah, yeah. So it works like direct links to a folder that has everything in it, or it's all attached, like 222.22, non-digital files for all this.
I will give you the, the link to the supporting documentation.
That's perfect, sometimes you try.
It's just something very long.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.